Mr. Abiscato. Is that Alberti? Is that Curie? Is that Grillo? Ms. Jarvis? Mr. Schwecch? Bruno? Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. The Herald and News, The Record, The South Bergenite, The Observer, and The Source. As a member of the Board of Education, 2012 to 2015. We, members of the Board of Education, first part of the state's administration, and industry's whole importance, express our sincere wishes of help and happiness. Mr. Abiscato. Four. Is that Alberti? Is that Curie? Grillo? Ms. Jarvis? Mr. Schwecch? Bruno? Four. Mr. Abiscato. Four. Is that Alberti? Is that Curie? Grillo? Ms. Jarvis? Four. Mr. Bruno? Four. 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 Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to The Herald and News, The Record, The South Bergenite, The Observer, Township Clerk, and posted in the lobby of the Town Hall and Board Office, setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings of the Board. And I have a motion for the office of President of the Board of Education. Please nominate James Chizikuno as President of the Board of Education.
A second.
We have a roll call for President. Mr. Bruno. Do I give any other nominations? Causing that nomination. Mr. Abiscato. Four. Ms. Alberti. Ms. Alcurie. Mr. Grillo. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Malinak. Mr. Musto. Mr. Schwecch. Mr. Bruno. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to The Herald and News, The Record, The South Bergenite, The Observer, Township Clerk, and posted in the lobby of the Town Hall and Board Office, setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings of the Board. And I have a motion for the office of President of the Board of Education. Please nominate James Chizikuno as President of the Board of Education.
A second.
We have a roll call for President. Mr. Bruno. Do I give any other nominations? Causing that nomination. Mr. Abiscato. Four. Ms. Alberti. Ms. Alcurie. Mr. Grillo. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Malinak. Mr. Musto. Mr. Schwecch. Mr. Bruno. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to The Herald and News, The Record, The South Bergenite, The Observer, Township Clerk, and posted in the lobby of the Town Hall and Board Office, setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings of the Board. And I have a motion for the office of President of the Board of Education. Please nominate James Chizikuno as President of the Board of Education.
A second.
We have a roll call for President. Mr. Bruno. Here. Ms. Alberti. Here. Ms. Alcurie. Here. Mr. Grillo. Here. Ms. Jarvis. Here. Mr. Musto. Here. Mr. Schwecch. Here. Mr. Bruno. Four. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to The Herald and News, The Record, The South Bergenite, The Observer, Township Clerk, and posted in the lobby of the Town Hall and Board Office, setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings of the Board. And I have a motion for the office of President of the Board of Education.
Please nominate James Chizikuno as President of the Board of Education. A second.
I, please, I, please thank you. Are you ready?
We're ready now. We got the right hand up.
I. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
The State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications prescribed.
The qualifications prescribed.
For the law of office.
The law of office.
Of members of the Board of Education.
Of members of the Board of Education.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Furthermore.
Furthermore.
I affirm and declare.
I affirm and declare.
That I will, excuse me, that I am not disqualified as a voter.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS.
RS.
Nineteen. Colon four dash one.
Colon four dash one.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, now that we got it. Roll call. Mr. Abiscato.
Here.
Ms. Alberti. Ms. Alcurie. Mr. Grillo. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Malinak. Mr. Musto. Mr. Schwecch. Mr. Bruno. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to The Herald and News, The Record, The South Bergenite, The Observer, Township Clerk, and posted in the lobby of the Town Hall and Board Office, setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings of the Board. And I have a motion for the office of President of the Board of Education.
Please nominate James Chizikuno as President of the Board of Education. A second.
We have a roll call for President. Mr. Bruno. Do I give any other nominations? Causing that nomination. Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti. Ms. Alcurie. Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Malinak.
Can I just say one thing? Not anything against you two. No, I don't know. When, when we received our packets home, it had a lady that stated that you were the President. And I just kind of felt like, when did they do that?
I've been asking the same question.
I, I just thought that, you know, we should have waited until tonight. But four. Not this.
No, there have been cons when it's been on.
No, there's a paper, the new organization law. Where it has all the, all the committees and everything. Yes. And on the bottom it said, as President, Mr. James Chizikuno, the ex-officio as a member of the Board of Education.
Mr. Musto. Mr. Schwecch. Mr. Bruno.
Four.
I'd like to make a motion that we vote on a Vice President.
I'd like to vote Joseph Abiscato.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Recuse myself.
Ms. Alberti. Ms. Alcurie. Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Malinak. Mr. Musto. Mr. Schwecch. Mr. Bruno.
Four.
Congratulations, Mr. Abiscato.
Can I say something? I'd just like to say a couple of words. First of all, I'd like to welcome back Ronnie Sherry. Ronnie, like, like seventy-five years. And Sherry. And Josephine, who was here and joins us again. I'd like to welcome them back to the Board of Education. I think we have a great thing going here. We have a lot of great programs in the fire and work together and move this thing forward. So I just want to welcome you guys back. And the other thing I want to say, if you see David leaning over whispering in my ear, it's nothing like that. It's just that I know nothing about. It will, it will take me a couple of meetings before I get to this. Okay, so when you see him go like this, it's nothing. All right? Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call. Next meeting will be at seven o'clock. Right now. So you have six minutes. Would you like to stand up to salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Here.
Ms. Alberti. Ms. Alcurie. Mr. Grillo. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Malinak. Mr. Musto. Mr. Schwecch. Mr. Bruno.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to The Herald and News, The Record, The South Bergenite, The Observer, Township Clerk, and posted in the lobby of the Town Hall and Board Office, setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meeting of the Board. Okay? We need to make, I need to have a motion to approve the minutes of meetings nineteen and twenty.
We're gonna, we're gonna do it separate, okay? We're gonna do nineteen and we're gonna do twenty.
All right, nineteen first.
Make a motion for...
And Ronnie Schwecch second. Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti. Ms. Alcurie. Mr. Grillo. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Malinak. Mr. Musto. Mr. Schwecch. Mr. Bruno.
Four.
Like to have a motion for number twenty. Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato. Four. Ms. Alberti. Ms. Alcurie. Mr. Grillo. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Malinak. Mr. Musto. Mr. Schwecch. Mr. Bruno.
Four.
Oh yeah, we have a, a bunch of presentations and certificates we need to give out.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mrs. DeMarco and I, over the last number of board meetings, have been making it a point to recognize the achievements of our staff members and our students for some of the outstanding, outstanding, distinguished achievements that they have engaged in during the course of the teaching and learning process. This evening, similar to, like in past months, we're going to do the same. First, we have students in our middle schools, Jefferson School and Roosevelt School, who participated in a robotics, South Bergen Robotics Competition. I'm going to call up the advisors to the competition squad, who will be introducing the students. First, we'll bring up Lindsay McCoy. Lindsay, would you come up forward? And Mr. Vastola, teacher and principal at Jefferson School.
So we wanted to honor the students in our robotics club. We were very excited to start a STEM program like this. Jefferson School started a little bit late, but the kids have dried in. They were great. They played really well in our first competition. We're very excited for our second competition to start soon because of their training. They've been working really hard, so we just wanted to honor them. I'm gonna call the names of all the students. If you're here, just come up and receive your certificate, please. The first is Danny Lu. The second is Dean Wise. Brian Tamerina. Joshua Nam. Alexandra Castro. Bartos Babosa. And finally, we have Youssef Abu-Hakim.
They're gonna build a robot to clean the cafeteria, everyone.
Let's give a round of applause to the robotics team. At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. DeCorso and Ms. Lisa Pacillo, the advisor of the robotics team at Roosevelt School.
I just want to say one quick thing. I want to first thank, obviously, the advisors at Roosevelt and Jefferson, and of course, all the students. Their first competition, this is the first year that we started the program, and in their very first competition, they took fourth overall in all South Bergen.
Oh, I was calling the names. Ron, oh. All right. Ron, let's hear your, hear your. Robert Gepiero. Isabella DePisa. Inualla. John Malavani. Jacob Ospina. Abshad.
Abshad. That's it, that's all.
I'd like to call up Mr. Blake Spence, Supervisor of Fine and Performing Arts Department. Mr. Spence has a couple of awards to... Has a couple of awards to distribute with reference to students who have made the Bergen County Choir and Band. Mr. Spence.
The Bergen County Choir and Band is an audition-based program, and the audition is really quite rigorous. The three students that were selected to participate in Bergen County Choir and Band get to sing with other talented singers and play with other talented musicians throughout Bergen County. So we're really excited to recognize them, and they're really representing Lynnhurst well in both of these groups. First we recognize this evening, for her participation in Bergen County Choir, Francesca DePisa. For her participation in Bergen County Band, Benzaido Olivera. And for his participation in Bergen County Band, Dennis Alarcon.
Round of applause for these truly outstanding... At this time, I'd like to call up Supervisor of our Special Education Department, who also has some certificates to present. Let's welcome Sharon King-Dawson.
Tonight is my honor to present certificates to the members of our first official CPAC group in the Lynnhurst School District. We spent many late nights dialoguing and figuring out the purpose of this group. They will be working very closely with the Special Services Department. Mrs. DeMarco helped us, helped the group to construct their, their mission statement. And we're very excited to have a very motivated group of parents to work with to move special services forward in this district. So here we go. Ms. Anarizo. So Jo Allen. Ms. Maria Donovan. Mrs. Sweetman. Mrs. Altieri. Finally, Ms. Tracy Benedetto. If there are any parents in the school who have students in this district with students with disabilities, feel free to contact any of the members of CPAC or your support system. There will be a meeting, January twelfth, at Memorial School. You're invited to that meeting. I hope to see you all.
You can get information on the website, too. On your website page, so they're awesome. Join, because if you have students with needs, please join.
Let's give a warm appreciation and welcome to... This is our Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. Thank you very much. And finally, I'd like to call up the high school principal, Ms. Laura Bruno, who has a special award to present.
Congratulations to Ashley Stevens for being selected as Chief State School Officer Candidate to represent New Jersey in the U.S. Scholars Program. Ashley, who ranks in the top five percent of a graduating class, has challenged herself academically by taking eleven honors courses, three advanced placement courses. In 2014, she represented Lynnhurst High School as our Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Ambassador. In addition, Ashley is the editor-in-chief of our award-winning Lighthouse newspaper. Outside the school, she can be found working at the local library, where she's been employed since her sophomore year. We're proud to have Ashley representing Lynnhurst High School, and New Jersey is such an elite program. And as the certificate reads, Certificate of Achievement, presented to Ashley Stevens for her selection as the Chief State School Officer Candidate to represent New Jersey in the U.S. Scholars Program.
Ashley, congratulations.
Congratulations.
This is an extremely distinguished award, and let's show our appreciation and honor.
Mr. Schwecch, finance.
Any board member takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of business committee. May so indicate now, in a separate motion, for each of the accepted items to be obtained. Now, we're gonna split this. First is item one, you set it.
Second.
Okay. I made a mistake. We have to do new business first. If you would like to do it, Mr. Grillo. After four years, you're in fact...
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of new business committee, may so indicate now, in a separate motion, for each of the accepted actions will be obtained. Bearing none, I make a motion that one through four be adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato. Four. Ms. Alberti. Ms. Alcurie. Mr. Grillo. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Malinak. Mr. Musto. Mr. Schwecch. Mr. Bruno.
Four.
Now Finance, Mr. Grillo.
Well, I, I'll say, I'll make, I'll make motion to accept one through seven.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Avriscato, four. Ms. Alberti, four. Ms. Alcuri, four. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, four. Ms. Malinak, four. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schreck, four. Mr. Vuno, four.
Now it's item number eight.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Avriscato, four. Ms. Alberti, four. Ms. Alcuri, four. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, four. Ms. Malinak, four. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schreck, four. Mr. Vuno, four.
Education and Curriculum, Ms. Alcuri.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education and Curriculum Committee may so indicate now and accept a motion for each of the accepted actions to be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that items one, two, three be voted adopted.
Second.
I'd like to say one thing about the mobile dentist. Christina Bancroft, the Nurse at Lincoln School, did an outstanding job in researching this and getting this for the Lincoln School community. And hopefully, it'll do a great deal of good for the Lincoln School community, and we can then put this in the rest of our building. But I'd like to publicly thank Mrs. Bancroft for doing all the legwork to get this program into effect. So, hearing none, I make a motion that one through three be accepted.
Next, roll call.
Mr. Avriscato, four. Ms. Alberti, four. Ms. Alcuri, four. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, four. Ms. Malinak, four. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schreck, four. Mr. Vuno, four.
Policies, rules and regulations, Mr. Avriscato.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Rules and Regulations Committee may so indicate now and accept a motion for each of the accepted actions to be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that we accept items one through five.
Roll call.
Mr. Avriscato, four. Ms. Alberti, four. Ms. Alcuri, four. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, four. Ms. Malinak, four. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schreck, four. Mr. Vuno, four.
Personnel. Could be anyone, right? Mr. Musto.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Personnel, may so indicate now and accept a motion for each of the accepted actions to be entertained. Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion, number one through sixteen, be adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Avriscato, four. Ms. Alberti, four. Ms. Alcuri, four. Mr. Grillo, four. Ms. Jarvis, four. Ms. Malinak, four. Mr. Musto, four. Mr. Schreck, four. Mr. Vuno, four.
Superintendent's report.
In the packet, there is a proclamation from the New Jersey School Boards Association. If you get an opportunity, you may want to read that. Obviously, not now, but consistent with the New Jersey State School Boards Association recognizing this month of January statewide as School Board's Recognition Month, I'd like to make a statement on behalf of the district administrators, district faculty and staff, and the parents in the community, as well as the community at large. On behalf of the entire community of Lindhurst, I respectfully and appreciatively recognize the members of the Lindhurst Board of Education, past and present, during this month of January 2016, designated as New Jersey School Board Recognition Month. We should all rightfully and respectfully recognize the contributions made by our local Board of Education members. As one of 586 school boards in New Jersey, our nine-member Board of Education sets policies and oversees operations for our pre-K through 12th grade school program. Our members, individually and as a collective body, are committed to working with the Lindhurst Public School educators in a unity of purpose to achieve a degree of excellence in every aspect of our educational program. Together, along with the district administrative team, the Board is responsible to uphold the highest standards of ethical leadership and decision-making in terms of the educational welfare of each and every child in our school district. In our respective leadership roles and responsibilities, we seek to develop and maintain our schools in a manner that meets the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. On behalf of the entire Lindhurst community, I extend heartfelt appreciation and recognition to the Lindhurst Board of Education as individuals and as a collective body. Thank you very much for your service. Consistent with what we did 10 minutes ago in recognizing the efforts of staff and students, we have been at recent board meetings announcing that each and every board meeting, we will also be making an educational presentation to keep the Board informed, alert, aware, so that they know and understand what it is that's going on in our K-12 program. In reorganizing our school district in the past six months, Mrs. De Marco and I, and our team of administrators working with the Board of Education, we've established five district leadership committees. Essentially, these five district leadership committees connect with our five district Board of Education and district goals in the following areas. One is professional development of faculty, administrative staff, and teaching staff. Aside from professional development, we also have assessment, how we assess student behavior. We have an assessment committee. A third committee that we have is in the area of technology, which of course supports professional development. It supports assessment as well. A third committee is curriculum and instruction. We also have another committee, which is special education and remedial education. Those five, did I mention them all? I got them all. Those five committees have been put together comprised with administrators, faculty from the lower, middle, and upper, and the upper program, high school as well as middle and lower elementary program. This cross-section representation ensures that we're going to be having input from all of the critical members in our educational team, so that when we make decisions, they're informed decisions, they're research-based, they're based on what we're doing, what's happening with current trends in education throughout the nation, throughout the state of New Jersey, so that we're compliant with the rules and regulations of the state. This evening, we will be making two presentations. They'll be made by the co-chairs of two of the committees. And in subsequent months, we'll be making other presentations. This evening, we'll be making presentations about professional development and special and remedial education. First, I'd like to call up Mr. Blake Spence, who was up here a few moments ago. Mr. Spence, in addition to being a supervisor of Fine and Performing Arts, is also the supervisor of our remedial program. He will be up here with Miss Sharon King Dobson, who you also met earlier, who is our Supervisor of Special Education. They'll be reporting to you, giving you an overview of the vision, and the mission, and the goals, the desired and desired outcomes of the work of our committee district-wide. Ms. King, Mr. Spence, would you come up, please? As they're setting up, I think I only mentioned four committees. The fifth committee is Curriculum and Instruction, if I didn't mention that. Each presentation should take only 10 to 15 minutes, so it'll be an executive summary of all the work that they've been doing. So if you just be patient with us and stick around for the second presentation of the Professional Development Committee. And then, of course, we're going to have a reception for our Board of Education. Thank you very much for your attention. Blake, Sharon?
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Carino. Well, this is warming up. I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Carino, Mrs. De Marco, and Mr. De Pisa for having us this evening. We organized ourselves in September, and since our organization have had four meetings of the Special Education and Remedial Instruction Committee. And with each meeting that we have, our energy builds for what's going on in this district. So to be here to present tonight is truly an honor and an opportunity to share with you some things that we're very excited about. In addition to the two of us being here, we also have several members of our committee present. And I'd like to recognize them as well. Present tonight with us, we have Joe De Corzo, Principal of Roosevelt School, and committee member. Joe Vasola, Principal of Jefferson School, and committee member. Olivia Jagay, a Child Study Team member here at Lindhurst High School. And Jennifer Sordino, a remedial teacher at Columbus School. Not present tonight, but playing an important role in our committee. We also have Robert Janjeruso, Principal of Columbus School, and Robert Fig, a special education teacher here at Lindhurst High School. As we began to think about this committee and what we wanted this committee to focus on, our initial thoughts turned to what was happening in the district already. And before we came up with the mission statement, what Ms. King Dobson and I and the committee members decided was we wanted to recognize the efforts of the Special Education Department and the Remedial Education Department, and join those efforts together, along with the Special Education and Remedial Instruction Committee, to create a three-pronged approach to student success. And what you see on our PowerPoint is our view of how these three areas interact. Together, they're going to increase student achievement in our district. The committee members agreed to establish some important distinctions prior to our collaboration. Committee members recognized the work being done by our separate departments, and we decided that as a committee, what we would focus on was special education and remedial instruction, an additional piece that will serve our students. Before we begin talking about the mission statement of our committee, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Ms. Sharon King Dobson to mention some of the great achievements of our Special Education Department in the past six months.
Okay, so I promise that I will be very brief. One of the first things we did in the Special Education Department was that we revamped and we streamlined our INRS Intervention and Referral System, which is a procedural document and an intervention library. We streamlined an INRS process into real-time, and I worked in conjunction with the Supervisor of Student Services to get this done. A copy of our procedural document, as well as our intervention library, is available on our district's Intranet. The intervention library is available for teachers who need interventions in their classrooms on a daily basis. We have conducted training of district administrators in regards to how to use the new INRS system. I am very pleased to say that currently in the district, we have about 32 referrals, only four of which have been coming from directly within the district. Most of the referrals have been coming from early intervention, as we see our numbers growing. Another thing that we worked on in the Special Ed Department was to make some changes in the preschool program. It's our philosophy that we need to start from the bottom and work our way up, because preschoolers are very important to the people in our school community. So some of the changes that we made was that we applied for a pilot program with the state, and we were accepted into that program. We were selected out of 70 schools, we were 23 of 70. And what is happening there is that we are working closely with a state representative. They have come in already, and they have done an assessment of our preschool environment, and they have made recommendations. We have also developed action steps to fix the flaws, if you may call them flaws, that they have found in our preschool program. Also, we have implemented a standardized preschool curriculum, which is a creative curriculum, and it is widely recognized in the state of New Jersey. And we've also, we had an iPad initiative where we introduced the use of technology into the preschool program. Okay, another thing that we did in the Special Ed Department was that I worked closely with Mr. Spence and our coordinator, our curriculum coordinator, K-23, to identify reading intervention programs that we wanted to introduce to our teachers to use in the classroom or to integrate into their classrooms. And two of those programs are on Funnings First and Explore the Code. Some teachers are experimenting with those programs as we speak. Also, at the high school level, in our Lighthouse program, we recognize the need to revamp that program. And one of the first steps that we've taken is we've introduced a functional academic curriculum for our lowest students, those who are more severely intellectually disabled and cannot work from the regular curriculum, right? So we are focusing on introducing functional skills that they can use and carry, you know, with them throughout life. And that program is being piloted now in the Lighthouse program. We've also developed the Parent Advisory Group. You met the members tonight. This is a very important group, because they will be a part of the decision-making when we bring new programs into the district. We will have continuous dialogue about how we move forward as a district. Parental input is extremely important, and so, you know, I am very excited about working with these parents. We also have a new special services webpage, and this webpage is hopefully to be used as an information highway, so to speak. A lot of information, a lot of resources are on there for parents, and we've been encouraging parents to just go on this website and, you know, find the information that you don't always have to call. There's information on there that you can access. Professional development, we are currently collaborating with OTC to pre-professional development and program analysis to our speech and language therapy program, which we currently offer in the district. Right now, we are looking at, I think our goal essentially is to encourage best practice and to provide the best therapy services that we can. And in doing so, we're looking at more innovative models of delivering therapy in the district. So one of the models that we're looking at is the three-to-one therapy model, and hopefully, you will hear more about this. We're looking at the number- We're looking at the number of time that, you know, the amount of time that kids are spending outside of the classroom as opposed to inside of the classroom. And we're looking into therapy models that will encourage, you know, therapists to push in more into the classroom so kids do not miss a lot of that instructional time. We've done, we've provided crisis intervention. This is extremely important. And we had 12 staff members who were trained to be trainers. And recently, in December, about 50 staff members, this training was turnkey to them, okay? And then finally, Special Olympics. We are bringing Special Olympics into the district. We started a partnership with Special Olympics New Jersey. Again, we're starting at the preschool level. We had our first training session with them this week. And we received training of the different activities that we would do with these students when we have our first unified Special Olympics event. Additionally, I will be meeting with the Special Olympics Director who is in charge of grants. And they will be providing us training in terms of how to write grants and how to apply for grants, monies of which could be used to offset some of the costs of the community-based instruction program that we will be introducing into the district in September. So these are just some of the major things that we've done so far in Special Ed.
In terms of the remedial department and our accomplishments in the past six months, we began by creating a multi-tiered, multi-criteria system for identifying students that are in need of extra support. In addition, we created a rolling system of admissions. So if we notice, if my teachers notice over the course of the year a student is falling behind, they can be introduced into the remedial program during any particular month. I've continued to provide my department with continued professional development as to the needs of struggling learners and how to support those needs. And last but not least, my department is working to create a remedial handbook that will outline all of our procedures and policies moving forward in the future. With the accomplishments of these two departments in mind, we dialogued with our committee members about a mission statement, a statement that would guide our committee throughout not only the course of this year, but many years to come. And to present that committee statement, I will allow you, Ms. King-Dobson, again.
All right, so basically, our mission statement is self-explanatory. The Special Education and Remedial Instruction Committee will collaboratively and cooperatively work collaboratively and cooperatively with educators, parents, and community members to recognize, develop, and improve services that meet the unique and individualized needs of each and every student in order to foster their social, emotional, and academic success now and in the future. Okay, so what does this mean? What are the key points of our mission statement? We need to work collaboratively and cooperatively with all key stakeholders, right? Because in order for us to change, to create the kind of change that we want, everybody needs to be involved. We also need to recognize, develop, and improve services. The work of the committee will build on foundations laid in past years, right? And the committee will aim to celebrate the great work occurring in and out of our classrooms and provide tools needed for continued growth and improvement. And the last key point is to foster social, emotional, and academic success now and in the future. Growth must take into account the development of a well-rounded individual with skills that will lead to success outside of the classroom. And we recognize the importance of that in our special needs population.
So that's a huge mission statement. Once we created it, we wanted to break it down into smaller pieces so we could really figure out how we were going to make this mission statement come alive. And in order to do that, we created a long-term goal based on our mission statement. This is the only long-term goal that our committee created. However, we do anticipate creating more in the future. We thought that this particular long-term goal kind of packed a punch. It gave us enough to work with in the months to come. So our first long-term goal was to educate our staff and community in order to promote an understanding of the differences between special education and remedial programs, services, and instructional practices. What the committee recognized was that, within our district, there wasn't a strong understanding that there is a difference between special education services and remedial services. They're two separate entities. Even though we're forming one committee that focuses on the two, the two populations have very distinct needs. And that's where this long-term goal comes from. How can we make sure our community as a whole, all of our stakeholders, understand, recognize this difference so that we can support students in an individualized way that's needed?
Okay, so from our long-term goal, we developed a short-term goal, okay? And the first short-term goal is teachers and community members will be able to differentiate between special education and remedial programs and services, right? From our short-term goal, we developed action steps, right? We've developed, I'm sorry. Trying to get through in 10 and 15, or 15 minutes. I probably need to slow down. We developed three action steps. The first action step, department-based, to ensure clarity of language in regards to responsibilities and services provided. As Mr. Spence said before, we see a lot of confusion in terms of the language as it relates and the services as related to special education and remedial. People tend to confuse the two services. So a big part of what we need to do is to educate our community, our school community, about how different these two services are, okay? Our second action step is committee-based, right? Committee statements. We develop a committee statement to teachers and administrators. And basically, we did this because we wanted everyone in our schools to have an idea of what it was that we were doing and what our intentions were for the future. Our third action step, also committee-based, which is a staff newsletter that we're working on.
So to expand on the first action step, which was to ensure clarity of language in regards to responsibilities and services provided, to share, I like to use the analogy of a tree. Trees have many branches, just like our services have many branches. One branch relating to special education, another branch related to remedial education. The branch for special services, for special education, deals with students that have been tested and have IUPs. The branch for remedial education deals with students that are struggling learners but have not been classified and have an IUP. This was at the heart of the distinctions that we were trying to make moving forward. What we realized and was brought to us by the committee was that there were several special education teachers that were serving our remedial population and several remedial teachers that were serving our special education population, that there was an overlap. Through all of our actions as a committee, we hope to separate these two departments, separate these two services, and educate our community about the differences.
And again, our second action step was just putting out a statement just to advise, you know, what we're working on and where we intend to go in the future. Currently, we are working on our newsletter, and the first edition will be published sometime this month. We will develop additional short-term goals and objectives and action steps, you know, as we go along.
We welcome feedback, not at this time, but if you have any questions or concerns, we certainly don't hesitate to reach out to either of us or any of our committee members. We are truly committed to serving our struggling learners in this district because we believe they truly have all the potential in the world. Sure, sounds good. I'll wait for it.
Just a general statement. I, once again, I'd like to let the community know that we're just in the embryonic stages of the birth of what will be an elite school district in terms of student achievement across the board. That's our goal. We want to become recognized as a lighthouse district in the state of New Jersey. And we will, because we have the talent to do it. We have children talent, parent talent, and we have educator talent. It's just a matter of everyone working together. A more specific note with respect to remedial and special education, we have approximately, correct me if I'm wrong, 20% of the students in our district are classified students or in special education. They have a specific IUP. That excludes the remedial component. So we're talking about a significant, a substantial number of students who require additional services, who have special needs and require additional services, being provided by educators who have that expertise. So this is where we're going. And again, we're just in the formative stages, but it's important that the community knows and understands what it is that we're doing. Because we're moving, as you know, to a referendum to refurbish our schools and a redevelopment for a new junior high school. And it's important for the community to know and understand and rally behind what it is that we're doing in order that we together can achieve these goals. Okay, we have another presentation on professional development. Two educators who were up here earlier, I'd like to call them up again. They co-chair our Professional Development Committee, and they would be our high school principal and Roosevelt School principal. Let's welcome Ms. Buno and Mr. Corso.
Setting that up. Our committee is also comprised of principals, educators, our teachers in our elementary, middle, and high, and supervisors. Just to recognize our committee, myself, Mr. Corso, Mr. Robert Janjeruso, Ms. Jeff Rattigan, who is our athletic director and supervisor at the high school, Ms. Sharon King-Dobson, Ms. Ellen Bender, who is a third-grade teacher, and Ms. Laura Byber, who is our high school language arts teacher. One of the things in our early meetings when we first got together was to talk about what professional development is and what it has meant to our faculty so far and what we want to see it become. So we started off by just kind of throwing some keywords out. You know, we all sat around the conference table. We had the big whiteboard, and we just kind of brainstormed. And from those words, that's how we created our mission statement. Because these were words that were agreed upon and were important to us in the future of our professional development for our district. So you can read the mission statement, but some key words that I do want to point out. One thing we want to make sure that all professional development for our faculty and staff is meaningful. That if they are going to be taking time away from the students out of the classroom, that what they're going to do is meaningful to them and for what their needs are in the classroom. It enhances their effectiveness. Enhance, that was also another big word. We're doing great things in the classroom, but we do want to enhance what they're doing in the classroom. And just like our students, our teachers are constantly students as well. So what we want to do is learn strategies that are going to make them better teachers. Another really important thing that we addressed was, is to encourage reflection. And one of the components of professional development and teaching in the classroom is being reflective, is being able to teach a great lesson but reflect upon that. What happened? How can I make it better? What can I do differently next period or next block? And that was also a really important part of the learning process and the professional development process, is to encourage reflection. And ultimately, why are we all here and why are we all doing this is to improve the academic achievement for all of our students. Everything that we do and everything that we look at as far as professional development has to be able to improve the achievement of our students. So one of the things that we started at the high school last year, our teacher evaluation model, there were many of them to select from. And the model that our district chose is called Danielson. And in the Danielson model of the teacher evaluation, there are four components. So each of those components are broken down into different strands. So as the year went on, what we did was we tracked our teachers and their scores in each of these components and categories. So we were able to see where our teachers' strengths were and where their weaknesses were. So at the end of the, at the end of the school year, we were able to compile all of this data. And what it showed us was these three or four categories that seemed a little, a little low. So what that told us was these are areas of improvement that we want to focus on for our staff. So you can see that, I know it's very small. So at the next, at the end of the day, what we did was we took a look, and there were those four major categories. One is designing student assessment. And that is, again, how we are assessing our students, which speaks to the assessment committee and what they're doing in their committee. Questioning and discussion techniques, which is a very important part of the teaching process, is how are you questioning your students so that they are able to answer their own questions and to understand what they're doing in the classroom is actually meaningful in their future? meaningful in their future. The next was using assessment instruction, and that is helpful for the teacher. And that tells our teacher, am I accomplishing what I need to accomplish as this block or as this period goes on? And also, again, a very important part is differentiating instruction, because we all know that there are multiple levels of students in our classrooms, again, which speaks to our special education remedial committee to address those needs as well. But as classroom teachers, we have to understand that there are varying levels of ability. So that was the other top, the other category that we looked at at the high school.
So our lower elementary and upper elementary buildings took a look at it. It's a post.
The high school took very much a quantitative approach to collecting that data where our lower building took more of a qualitative approach to collecting the data. And we did that through our skip team. And a skip team is called a school initiative panel. Each building has one, so these are members that have volunteered to serve each of their buildings, to serve as a resource and to serve together professional development for their building. So we had those panels develop surveys that were given to the teachers and that they in turn filled out, collected, and evaluated, and then they determined what the needs of the teachers were. And it was amazing to us to see that whereas when the high school was collecting data and our teachers were kind of saying what they needed, they both very much aligned almost identically to what the needs of the district were. So when we looked at the data and we compiled all the skip data, we found our three main strands were differentiated instruction, technology, and co-teaching and collaborative teaching practices. So those are from the high school and then to the lower and upper elementary buildings are focused as a professional development committee. So the task then is, okay, how is a committee and how is a district, we then provide the professional development for teachers, for administrators, for entire faculty, so that ultimately we can improve student achievement, which is the ultimate goal. Okay? So, yeah. So as the committee met and discussed all the different avenues that we can go with, we decided to focus on four main branches of professional development, which are highlighted here. I'm going to mention each of the four in the bubbles, and then we're going to break each one down a little bit further, so you can see where we're going with those. So the first, and one of obviously the most important, is our instructional practices PD. Obviously, in order to improve student achievement, we feel that we have to improve instructional practices in the best, that's first and foremost. So we have a very structured and tailored approach that we'll get into to address our instructional practices. Next, we have some building-based professional development, getting into a little bit of that, of how that is going to roll out. Then we have, of course, our special education remedial PD, some that Sharon and Blake spoke about. And then last but not least, we have our state required PD. There's professional development that the state requires every faculty member to hear in and hear out, so that obviously that's an integral part of our committee and what must be done, because that's state mandated and we have to, we have to. So as we start to break down our bubbles here, our first in the room is our instructional practices, which again is really the cornerstone of what we're trying to achieve, not necessarily just in one year, but in years to come. Like Dr. Crino said, we're looking to become a lighthouse district, we're looking to be a benchmark in the areas around us. That's not going to happen overnight, it's going to take time, planning, and hard work. So this is a goal that certainly is not going to be accomplished in one year, but this is going to stream out for years to come. We're working with a consultant, Mary Oats, who served as an assistant superintendent in one of the top districts in the state for years. She's working to train the administrators and supervisors. We have a very structured and tailored approach to how that PD is going to roll out. And basically what we're doing is the consultant is coming in, she's working with administrators and supervisors first, we're reading some books together, we're studying them, we're looking at best practices, best research-based practices, we're analyzing them together, and then what we're doing is we're rolling that out to the teachers. And we're doing that in two avenues. One, every month we have an articulation meeting, and two, we have a PLC every month. So that's when teachers come together and work. Our articulations are building-based, that's when the principal and supervisor is going to work with their faculty on a certain strategy on something that we're all striving to achieve. Then that same month, they're going to follow up with a PLC where they're going to work then with grade-level faculty members. So we're going to first work as a building and then branch out and work as a district and work together. So it's a very structured and tailored approach. These are some of the accomplishments that we've done thus far on the right column there. What does not fit, we've worked on a red card, green card strategy, we've worked on a learning goal versus learning activity. And we're all really excited about our next articulation PLC, because we're going to start to really get into the meat and potatoes of really what we're trying to accomplish. Every teacher on Wednesday, the 13th, is going to receive a book, Becoming a Reflective Teacher. This is a book that the administrator, supervisor, and central office had read, dissected, and gone through, and now we're at the point where we're going to bring this to our teachers, to the faculty. So on Wednesday, every teacher in the book, in the district is going to receive this book, and now we're going to begin to dissect it, first as a building and then collectively as a district. So we're really excited. We're going to leave these up here when we're done, when we're having reflection, you can look at the book, and we can go from there. So that's our first, our first hook. As we move to our second bubble, which is building-based, you know, the first bubble, we're working with the consulting, that's someone coming in from the outside to train, to train us, but obviously we feel that we have tremendous faculty here. There's a tremendous amount of talent, there's teachers that have worked in the district for years that really know their stuff, they know their craft, they're masters of their classroom. And we feel that clearly we have to recognize what they're doing and allow them to present and offer what they're doing in their classroom to everyone in the district. So we've, so what we've done is we've structured some PD opportunities for teachers to participate in that their own colleagues are going to be presenting to them. So it'll be meaningful, day in and day out, what their colleague is doing, they're going to get to see, and we're going to turn heat that information. So throughout the year, we just email the teachers, we inform them of when the trainings are and the opportunity to go and participate and see what their colleagues are doing. These are some of the, some of the topics that are coming up, and we're going to continue to roll those out. And you'll be surprised, teachers want to share, they want to get out there, they want to work with their colleagues, and they're constantly volunteering ideas and strategies that they're going to then present to each other.
And one of the points that we go with this is that these professional opportunities are a result of where we think our teachers need professional development, questioning techniques, technology tools. So it is addressing the need and it is meaningful, which is what ultimately we want it to be, especially with a building-based.
We talked about already Blake and Sharon, obviously, you know, as we look to improve student achievement in the district, like Dr. Crino pointed out, 20% of our population are classified with an IEP. So certainly, as we look to improve student achievement, we have to recognize that, we have to value that, we have to honor that, and we have to provide tailored professional development that our special needs students can get the, give objectives, the instructional practices that they need, so that they can achieve to the best of their ability. So that's an integral part of the P that we're doing in district. So obviously, our five committees are not working in isolation, we have to work together. Laura, Blake, and I, our committees, we talk, we work together, we co-plan, we have meetings together, so that we're all on the same page of all, we all have a unity of purpose, and we're working together to achieve this, you know, the same common goal. And then last but not least, we have the state, and you know, we have to do certain PD every year to our faculty and staff. Crisis intervention in suicide, you know, we know of the tragedies that occur throughout the state, throughout the country, so our teachers are required to do training on that every single year. Children abuse and neglect our anti-bullying laws, HIV, teachers must receive training on that every single year. Bloodborne pathogens, right to know affirmative action, and the state recently passed legislation where everyone must receive this type of treatment. So these are required year in and year out. Of course, they have to be a part of the conversation, and we have to build those in to what we're doing as a whole, so that's where we are, what our state required PD.
The beauty of this professional development, however, is that we are able to provide it to our faculty and staff online. So we're utilizing our resource of our website app, and that's although very meaningful, professional development, it doesn't take away from class time and face time from our teacher, between our teachers and our students. So this is professional development, that the teachers have an opportunity to work on their own, on their prep line, on their own time, et cetera, but at least they don't have to be pulled from the classroom to pursue accomplishment.
So as we get to wrap up, one of the big goals of this committee, you know, we were formed at the beginning of this year, and we have very structured and tailored PD for this year, but one of our goals is to work with central office to ensure that we start planning for next year's PD. So the big goal now is, I know there is a task force put together to develop the master calendar. One of the big things that we want to do is begin planning PD for the entire school year next year, so we can provide teachers and the community a calendar of what we're doing this year. Obviously, we have very structured and tailored approaches, and we just want to continue to get better. We would like to, at the beginning of the school year or very early on, provide everyone with a very structured approach to exactly how PD is going to roll out, when it's going to be, where it's going to be, so that everyone can plan, people can make schedules, so that they can attend the sessions and the programs that they want. So we're, again, we're constantly working together, we're going to be waiting to get the district master calendar, and we have to really sit down as a committee, as multiple committees, and of course with central office to ensure that we build a calendar that fits everyone's needs and that is meaningful, purposeful, some of the things we talked about in the beginning, and it really kind of sums up and addresses exactly where we want to be as a district, and ultimately, the number one goal is to improve student achievement. That's why we're here, that's where we want to be, that's where we put all our eggs into that basket, and we're committed to that. So we're really excited about what we've done thus far, we're excited to work together and if we just keep pushing forward, and we look to that towards the future.
One more time, let's show Mrs. Buno, Mr. Corso, Mr. Spence, and Mr. Sharon King Dobson our appreciation for their presentations this evening. I'm looking at my watch, it's about 8:15, and it seems like we've been here for quite a while, and we have since 6:30, but this particular board, the actual meeting of this Board of Education started at seven, so it's only been an hour and 15 minutes. We tried, you heard a lot of educationese, a lot of terms that you may not be familiar with, and that's understandable, of course, but we wanted to give you a little insight, just a little glimpse of what it is that our professionals are doing. And what they're doing more than anything, yes, they have the expertise, and yes, they have the passion, but I think more than anything, what I'm starting to sense over these past six months and increasingly the last couple of months, is that people are starting to understand how powerful it is when you work together for the best interest of students. Don't underestimate the goal, don't think the goal is not attainable, it's attainable, and it's attainable because of the human beings that comprise this community, a great community, and we need to make it greater by giving the very best that we have individually and collectively, as adults, whether you're affiliated directly with the school district or whether you're in the community, to support what it is that we're doing in the school for our children. So thank you very much for your attention. I have to wrap up the superintendent's report, it's in your agenda. I won't be going through all of this, I would hope that you take it home and read it, because we put a lot of time in the administrators to compile in the superintendent's report to let the community know what's going on. So very quickly, if you want to just take a look at this with me, I promise it'll only take two or three minutes, if that. We talked about honoring the Board of Education and recognizing the volunteer efforts to service of our Board of Education. The second bullet on, I think it's page 11, I'm not sure which copy you have, it looks like page 13, there's a bullet there talking about No Name Calling Week. And HIV, harassment, intimidation, bullying, is something that we deal with throughout the country. A lot of time and effort has been placed in not dealing with HIV as it's already occurred, but preventing harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So Ms. Stevens, Ms. Muley, Ms. Trump, and so on and so forth, they're working, they're working on putting together a program the week of January 18th through the 22nd, which is National Name, No Name Calling Week. The next bullet relates to staff members in particular, although there were so many, who were involved in leadership, and they would be Stacy Tullock and Elaine Katniss for their leadership in organizing the Giving Tree Project. You can read more about that. Mayor Jan Jerusso and the Board of Commissioners, some of whom were here this evening, they extended a special thank you to Ms. Elena Wise and the Linthurst High School Choir for their performance in the Township's Holiday Celebration, Hometown Holiday in the Park. Our high school media specialist librarian, and Mrs. Rowe is sitting over here to my left, their liaison members from the school district to the Linthurst Public Library, and they're working on putting on a goal, which is to increase teen library use. They're looking to establish a teen room in the library, public library, and also similarly do something here at the high school to encourage teen reading outside of the curriculum. Ms. Taylor Pastore, the high school English teacher and supervisor, Ms. Lisa Klein, they put together a program, Winter Poetry Slam, and if you've seen that publication, I read it last night, it's absolutely incredible. So I don't know if it's been distributed yet, hopefully in the community, the high school community, I know it has been distributed, but community-wide, if you can get your hands on that document, you'll be quite entertained and appreciate the talent of our students. Congratulations to Mr. Blake Spence again, and our talented pool of vocal and instrumental students for some tremendous performances, K through 12, in December, holiday winter concerts. Also, Ms. Teresa Brennan and Ms. Donna Speding for their work in facilitating the Jefferson School Student Council's Second Annual Holiday Toy Drive. High school principal, Ms. Buno, she has, she's very proud of the engineering conference that a number of our seventh, our 10th and 11th grade science students had attended under the direction of Mr. Collins and Ms. Anna, I hope I pronounce her name right, Cornell. And also, I think, not finally, but also, Ms. Klein facilitated a curriculum consortium of English and language arts teachers in Burton County here at Linthurst High School. So again, you get a sense of the talent that we have in district and the network that we're starting to develop outside of Linthurst, taking the great stuff we do out into the county and taking all of the great programs in the county and embracing them here in the district. That professional network is so critical to high-functioning school districts. Let's see, what else? I guess you can go through the remainder of this, I won't take any more of your time, but there's one other person, once again, that I want to recognize, talking about passion and talent and deep commitment and working to draw everyone together. I'd like to recognize our assistant superintendent, Shawna DeMarvo. Shawna, thank you. Mr. Buno, do we have any other business, Mr. DePisa? No public comments? Could ask anything you want, Josh.
How do we, for our coming years, work with these vision meetings? Do you have that?
One of the things that I brought up today too, that Mr. DePisa and I were speaking about, is how to coordinate it with the Board of Commissioners, because you have this program that we're going to be doing between the two boards for construction, part of it being redevelopment, part of it being the referendums for November, and what my suggestion was going to be is the Board of Commissioners has set their agenda for meetings, and let's try to give a weekend between that, rather than what happens now is we've been running back-to-back. Monday, we've been doing a meeting here, Tuesday, we're doing a meeting at the commission, and I think what it might give us is an opportunity for both boards to have a little more time for preparation when a question is asked, so that we could better, you know, better serve the public in terms of giving information. So I asked them, I think they're looking at that, so it's kind of my fault that I didn't think about it until just the other day, when we were looking at the Board of Commissioners having set their agenda for meetings. So I hope that that's something everybody would understand, is I think going to be beneficial in the end. You'll have a Monday meeting here and in the following week probably, or however, you'll have a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, you'll have two shots or two times to ask questions about both the redevelopment portion, the junior high, and the referendum.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn? Second? Second, Joseph. Adjourn!